October 28th, and I'm gonna ask Clark Hopper if he would lead us in our invocation, be followed by the pledge of allegiance, and stand if you're able.
Dear Father, thank you for another great wonderful day to serve the people of Rainbow City and be with this council mayor as we make decisions that affects their day-to-day lives. Be with the American people during these awful trying times, whether it's through the weather, or whether it's through personal sickness or hunger, and this is what I ask for. Amen.
Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you turn your cell phones to the off or vibrate position, we'd appreciate it, and I'll ask our clerk Beth Lee to call the roll.
Anita Bedwell, Randy Weiss, Jeff Prince, Jamison Jenkins, Clark Hopper, Mayor Taylor.
Here. Number five is approve the minutes of the regular meeting of October 14th of 2024, and I'd entertain a motion that we do so. Is there any discussion? Those in favor by saying aye? Any opposed? Number six is personnel changes. Kay Farley, the court clerk, her last day work was Tuesday, October 15th of 2024. John Doster, a police officer, his last day work was Tuesday, October 15th of 2024. And Mike Prater, our SRO, will be moving from a seasonal SRO to a full-time SRO effective October 22nd, 2024, and to post for a certified, non-certified police officer for 10 days to end on Friday, November 8th of 2024, and I'd ask that you allow us to pass that in its entirety. Is there any discussion? Those in favor by saying aye? Any opposed? Number seven is an employee pay raise, and that's a one-step raise across the board, the raise for all employees effective Friday, November 1st of 2024, and I'd entertain a motion that we make that employee pay increase. Is there any discussion? Those in favor by saying aye? Any opposed? Number eight is resolution number 24-23, and it's authorized the mayor to renew the contract agreement with the Etowah County Commission and the sheriff of Etowah County to house prisoners. Contract will take effect on October 1st of 2024 through September 30th of 2025. The new contract costs me $35 a day per prisoner, and I'd entertain a motion that y'all allow me to enter into that contract. Is there any discussion? Those in favor by saying aye? Any opposed? Number nine is ordinance number 598, and it's granting a non-exclusive franchise to Farmers Telecommunication Corporation to construct, install, maintain, operate, and control a middle mile fiber optic infrastructure network within the public right-of-ways within the city of Rainbow City. And with that, I would need a motion to introduce the ordinance.
So move.
Is there any discussion? Those in favor by saying aye? Any opposed? Need a motion to suspend the rules for an immediate consideration. Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take a roll call vote and include me?
Anita Bedwell, Randy Weiss, Jeff Prince, Jamison Jenkins, Clark Hopper, Mayor Taylor.
Yes. Is there a motion to adopt? Clerk, will you take a vote and include me?
Anita Bedwell, Randy Weiss, Jeff Prince, Jamison Jenkins, Clark Hopper, Mayor Taylor.
Yes. Number 10 is a resolution number 24-24. It's a public hearing, and it's a notice of declaration of an emergency and notice of lis pendens on property located at 569 Becky Allen Circle. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone that'd like to speak for or against this proceeding? Anyone at all? Seeing none, hearing none? I'd entertain a motion that we pass this resolution. Any discussion? Clerk, will you take a vote and include me?
Anita Bedwell, Randy Weiss, Jeff Prince, Jamison Jenkins, Clark Hopper, Mayor Taylor.
Yes. Number 11 is Community Thanksgiving in Darlene Harkrow, and I see Craig out here with you. You can drag him up there. Come on, Craig, you always like to speak. Craig Scott worked with Gadsden Library. Welcome, and Clerk's got you, he's got you lit up so that your microphone will work. If you'll just give your name and address for our official record.
My name is Darlene Harkrow. The address for Community Thanksgiving is 1766 Highway 77 South Side, 35907. And so, good morning, or good afternoon, we're not morning anymore, to the mayor and the council members. Of course, I'm Darlene Harkrow. This is Craig Scott with Community Thanksgiving. We want to thank you first for allowing us to come today, or tonight, because this is a huge event, and we could not do it without you all. To give an update, last year, we fed 10,556 people. So it was the greatest, the biggest one we'd ever had. We're trusting the Lord that He has got us again this year, and so with that being said, we are coming again to ask for help. We greatly appreciate your past support. The budget for this year is $45,000. So far, we have about $29,000 left to go, and with, of course, the rise of groceries, we're expecting even more families to come. And we really want to get the word out, because it calls so much for one meal, Thanksgiving meal calls. We want to let them know, come, please dine in with us and have a meal. We can feed a lot of people, so that's a good thing. Our mission is to feed the homeless, the elderly, the hurting, the lonely, and the families who are desperately trying to make ends meet. We've provided a flower for you. I handed it back to the lady. So if you'll do us the honor of posting it to your Facebook for the city, as well as for each one of you posting that, so that we can get the word out. I still have people who come up to us and say, I don't know what Community Thanksgiving is. I stand in awe of my, what? So with that, if you can post those for us and let them know, hey, guys, we are desperately in need of volunteers. Last year, we done it with 927 people. That's not enough for the whole week. We really need help with that. So if y'all can help us by posting that, that would also be a great honor for us. And then the biggest thing is, is again, we just want to thank you for your time, for allowing us to come here today, and we couldn't, like I said, couldn't do it without you.
Thank you. Craig, have you got anything?
Of course he does.
Always.
Always. As she said, Community Thanksgiving, it's the largest in Alabama, and we've done research. We think we're top five in the country. So that's something to be proud of for our county and for the city of Gadsden, and really for all of us. It's a fantastic event. I'm sure she invited you to come out and volunteer, whether it's for an hour or two. We'll put you on the line. That's how I started. I started in 2009, going way back then. But it's really, really a great event. I'll tell you a little story, and this is what Community Thanksgiving is all about. So last year, it was 2 o'clock. We were running out of food. We end the event at 2 o'clock, and I had gone and done some deliveries, and I was on the way back, and I had three dinners still with me. And the call came in that a lady had just called on 4th Street in downtown Gadsden and wanted a couple of dinners. So I said, yep, I got a couple. Let me swing by. Well, the instructions were knock on the door and walk in. So that's a little different, right? So anyway, I found the location and knocked on the door, went in, and she said, I'm in here. I'm in the bedroom. I went, oh, okay. And it was Community Thanksgiving. She said, yep, come around the corner. And there she was, in her bed, with her two prosthetic legs on the floor next to her. So had a nice long discussion with her and left her all three meals, went out to the car and got the other one. But her home health, obviously, you know, holiday, they weren't working. So, and she had just heard from a neighbor about Community Thanksgiving, and had called in last minute, and we were able to get the meals to her. That's what it's all about.
That's right. We appreciate you guys. What would be the pleasure of the council? We've been giving money in the past to this, and I'll just turn that over to you guys.
Make a motion that we do the $2,500?
We have a motion and a second to give $2,500 to the Community Thanksgiving. Those in favor by saying aye? Any opposed? There you go.
Appreciate it.
You bet. Thank you all. I'm gonna, I'm gonna move down to number 14, which calls for an executive session for a possible real estate purchase. We spoke about that in an open work session, and there'll be no need for us to go into an executive session tonight. It'd be premature in light of what we're trying to do, and so we'll just pass over that, and we'll go back to a proclamation, and that's number 12, and that's for Charles Daniel Walker. And Mr. Walker is 100 years old, and he's gonna be a part of our centenarian club here in Rainbow City, and we're thrilled to have him here with us. Do y'all wanna bring Mr. Walker up? And I'm gonna ask the clerk if she would read the proclamation, and we'll get a photograph or two. And we're just honored to have you here with us today, sir.
Whereas Charles Daniel Walker was born on September 17, 1924, in Gadsden, Alabama, a city he proudly calls home for over 51 years, and whereas he is the cherished son of John Sidney Walker Sr. and Buena Vista Walker, and was blessed to be the youngest sibling among his loving family, which includes one older sister and two older brothers, and whereas he enjoyed a remarkable 37-year marriage to his beloved wife Ann Stoddard Walker, and whereas Charlie is the proud father of Sarah Walker Savage and the doting grandfather to his three grandchildren, Jacob, Samuel, and Anna Gray Savage, and whereas he is a devoted member of St. James Catholic Church, having actively participated in the Knights of Columbus, contributing his time and service to various events and meetings, and whereas he has devoted countless hours volunteering for the annual Tootsie Roll Drives, the Catholic Center of Concern, serving as an usher, preparing bulletins, and enhancing the fellowship experience with Sunday Morning Donuts and Coffee, and whereas Charlie dedicated 30 years of his career to the Alabama State Department, playing a pivotal role in the construction of many of the roads, including the vital Highway 280, before retiring in 1980, and whereas he further exemplified his work ethic by assisting in the opening of the first Walmart in Atala, where he worked for over 12 years, bringing convenience to his community, and whereas in his personal life, Charlie remains active with beloved hobbies such as bird hunting, fishing, skeet shooting, and genealogy, while also finding joy in reading, keeping his mind sharp through lifelong learning, and whereas he attributes his longevity to staying active and engaged in daily endeavors, from planning hunting trips and maintaining his yard, to the cherishing the time spent with his grandchildren, and whereas we ask all residents of our community to join me in congratulating him, being our sixth member inducted into the Rainbow City Centenarian Club, and now therefore I, Joe Taylor, mayor of the city of Rainbow City, Alabama, do hereby proclaim October 28th, 2024, as Charlie Walker Day in Rainbow City, Alabama, and recognize and honor his personal sacrifices and accomplishments as we celebrate this milestone for his 100th birthday. In witness thereof, I hereunto set my hand and affix the corporate corporate seal of the city of Rainbow City, Alabama, this the 20th day of October 2024.
Mr. Walker, Mr. Walker, no doubt, he lives just across the street in Gadsden, but we feel like he's the bigger part of Rainbow City than anybody else, and we're just thrilled to have him here, and thrilled for you to take a part in our centenarian club. That's a small group of folks.
At one time, I lived in, what you know now as Rainbow City, but it's long and across from here where we're sitting right now. That's the name of, when I was out in there, my home was, well, apart again, and it was pretty, it was a dusty, dusty home at that time. It was an English-type home, and I always thought, nobody even liked it. There was one other that was only not much better, but used to be the old TV camp, TV center, or the bird coop, but the two of them were the same. And I'm glad to be here, and the rest of that, I mean, it's too weird.
Well, we're thrilled to have you, and we're gonna continue to just claim you as a member of Rainbow City, a citizen of Rainbow City.
I always find my pride in that.
Yes, sir, absolutely. We're gonna get a photo.
We're down to, is there any, any one of our department heads that have anything? Chief, you good? Chief?
I just want to personally tell you guys thank you on behalf of the Recreation Center.
Could you come here and give your name and address for the official record?
Parks and Recreation address is somewhere down the road. No, I just wanted to personally tell you guys thank you on behalf of the Recreation Department for the one-time raise. We greatly appreciate that, but more than that, what you guys allow us to do for the community this past weekend at the Rainbow City Festival is a great success. Personally, I wanted to thank Camp Betsy and Tim McKee for the police and the fire and everything that they did in making this weekend a great success. So thank you guys for everything. We greatly appreciate it.
Yeah, Phil, we appreciate it. We don't say it enough, but I'm telling you, on these events that we're doing, our Parks and Recreation people just step up and do an incredible job, and I'm so thankful for them that they hang around, they come out there, and they do jobs that they're not normally there to do. You know, Jim Stewart's our electrician, and he takes care of sound, and we just have, we just have guys that plug in and do that, that work that, that we just don't have enough people for, and I appreciate you. There's no doubt about that. Anyone else, any of the other department heads? I'll go to council comments, and we'll start with a limited amount of time with Mr. Weiss.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, Mr. Walker, congratulations. We're so glad you're here. It's a remarkable accomplishment. You seem to have had a life full of accomplishments, and thank you for gracing us with your presence. We appreciate it. Rainbow City is growing by leaps and bounds, and with that, there's a lot of opportunities for employment. If you'll check our website, we'd love to have people. You can see, we, we take care of our own. We continue to do so, and that, the, we also appreciate the opportunity given by the Sheriff's Department. You know, that shows how different levels of government can work together to house our inmates and to take care of those needs. And again, it's, it's great to see different levels of government working together, whether it be county, state, local. Also, all the volunteers, whether it be for Thanksgiving or other things, we really appreciate what you guys do to help make our community, Rainbow City, South Side, Etowah County in general, and the city to the north as well. This past weekend, the Kia Sportsplex hosted the Gulf State's Flag Football Tournament hosted by True Sports of New Orleans, Louisiana. There were 22 teams from Texas, Louisiana, Alabama, Georgia, and Tennessee. Purchased over 27 hotel rooms were booked, and over seven local restaurants were patronized. We did a survey on that, and that's what we came up with. I want to personally thank Mr. Teddy Kennard with the organization that put this on. We took a lot of, his organization was mentioned to me about a year ago, and I reached out on a whim and contacted him. He'd never heard of Rainbow City, but he was excited to find out about it. And like I say, it went great. I couldn't have asked for a better event. And again, we talk about him a lot, but Philip and the staff of the Parks Recreation Department, the logistics involved. We ended up hosting, co-hosting soccer and flag football for a time. It was great. We appreciate all you guys did. Again, anything we can do to bring people to our city and our community is a great opportunity. And as Halloween fast approaches, I'd also like to remind everyone to be safe, but have fun. And again, thanks for everything we, all the departments did, not just Parks and Recreation who did a jam-up good job, but all of our public safety, the electricians, the streets. Everybody did a good job pitching in to make the Rainbow City, and that's correct, it's pronunciation, the Rainbow City Festival go off without a hitch, and it was great. And again, I'd like to remind everyone, next week, of course, is that wonderful time we all call national election. Go out and vote. You know, I'm gonna be honest with you. It's red and blue, and all that's important, but the only red and blue that matters to me in this city council are those guys in blue and those guys riding in the red trucks. And we need to take care of those people, and it's great to be able to do that. Thank you guys for what you do, and to all of our departments. God bless you guys, and have a lovely evening. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Mr. Prince?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm gonna keep my remarks relatively short as well. Councilman Weiss has covered most all of it. Mr. Walker, it is an honor to have you here tonight. I have a, my mom is 96, going on 97, and she's pretty sharp, too, mentally, and it's just a privilege to have you here and your family. Wish you many more years of good health and just family time together. So thank you for coming and being a part of this. The Community Thanksgiving has always meant a lot to me. My former church where I attended had several volunteers that were instrumental in that over the years. My wife cooked a lot of cornbread for the dressing over the years, and so it's, it's a privilege to be able to help with that for Etowah County and our citizens around here. So thank you for all y'all do. I know it's, it's a lot more work to it than people realize, and so. The one-step pay raise for our employees, we say this ad nauseam sometimes, I guess, and we all say it about how much we appreciate our employees, and I hope that that's reflected by us being able to help just a little bit. Groceries and gas, the gas is down right now, but groceries aren't. We all know the cost of living is going up every day, so it's, it's nice to be able to help the employees that help us, because without you guys, we couldn't do our job, is the truth of it. So the Rainbow Festival, thank you again. I'll follow Randy's remarks to, about that for both of our fire and police chiefs and the Parks and Rec, all that they did Saturday night. We had an excellent crowd. I'm guessing total over a couple thousand people down there, and I didn't count heads, obviously, but there were other activities going on around Etowah County. I know Glencoe had a similar event out there, and they had a couple thousand, so it's good to see the community come out, the kids dressed up, of course, candy buckets getting filled up. We had plenty of candy this time, so that was fun. It was a fun night, so thank everybody that had a part in that. And it is, we sit up here sometimes and just go through, seems like we're going through the motions, but I promise you that we've already done our homework, and it's, it's a privilege to work alongside this mayor and this council. And I've said that before in the last four years, but I want y'all all to know, and our city clerk, we couldn't do it without her. She keeps us out of jail. But to get along, Randy said something about getting along, and I think that that's the key thing for Etowah County. We all need to be pulling in the same direction. We're a great bunch of people in Etowah County, and I think Rainbow City, I'm thankful to be leading the way with Rainbow City and this mayor and council. So that's all I'll say. Last thing, the election on the 5th, go out and vote. No matter who you vote for, no matter what your political stance is, a lot of people fought and died for that privilege, for us to be able to go pencil in a name. So please go vote. So that's all I have tonight, Mayor.
Ms. Bedwell?
Thank you. Darlene, thank y'all for what you do. It's a wonderful thing, and I know that you're truly blessed after you spend so many days of hard work and so much going on at that point. It is just something that you just, just have to experience, isn't it? So, but, and Mr. Walker, we just are just thrilled to have you.
So, but, and, Mr. Walker, we just are just thrilled to have you. I just could sit and listen to you talk for days, I know. I love to hear things about how, where you've lived and how things have changed and what's going on. That's just awesome. So, but thank you for, and your family for being here. One of the things that excited me the most about our agenda, and not to be repetitious about everything that's been said so far, but one of the things is the, the, the resolution for number ordinance, it's number nine on our thing, our agenda, that we're getting some new fiber optic, and, you know, sometimes we think about technology as being so far away from us, especially at mine and your age, that we, we think, well, you know, do, how impressive is this? Well, I'll just tell you that this is very exciting to me. It is, it is just, it will just make a mark that we just really can't imagine for our children. We always talk about growing our city. These are some positive things that is not just for the growth of our city and for businesses and things like that, but it is for, it's something that'll be used for the safety, for our safety, safety of our children. Information will get out, and it will be, it will educate, help educate our children to be at a level that the rest of the world is. And, but there's just so many things about that one simple little ordinance there that I, just makes me so proud that we're, have the opportunity to do that. And so, go vote. That's all I gotta say. You know, one vote could really make a difference. I'm speaking from experience, so, but it's nice to have y'all.
Mr. Jenkins?
Thank you, Mayor. I do wanna start by saying to Mr. Walker's family, it's an honor to have you and your family here. Just can't, can't even imagine the things that you could have seen or that we could spend all night talking about, and I do wanna say to Ms. Harkrow and your team, we greatly appreciate all that you do for our community. It is an invaluable service that is provided, and has already been mentioned, our Rainbow City Fall Festival was an incredible hit. Our employees made it look absolutely flawless. I know my son thoroughly enjoyed watching Monsters, Inc. I was surprised that he sat there for an hour and a half and did not move, but he absolutely loved it. I also want to bring up our community market. It is coming to a close this week, but I just wanna tell you, it's been like really, really cool to watch that market grow. My wife works from home a few days a week, and so she gets an opportunity to come up in the mornings more than I have, but it's been really awesome to watch that community market grow. Andy and Gala both have done a phenomenal job with that. This past week, the mayor donated money out of his own pocket to provide some BLTs for everybody that was, that was coming, and just really, honestly, just stuff like that, just watching our community come together. So very grateful for the time and effort that our employees and that our mayor have put into that, and it's been really cool. The last thing I have is with Halloween coming up, if you know anybody who has kids who are having trouble finding a costume, or who cannot afford a costume, or who cannot get somewhere to trick or treat. My wife is part of the Gadsden Service Guild. They service all of Etowah County, and they have taken some of their funds and resources, and they have pulled together some costumes for all ages of kids. So if you know anybody that you think might be struggling, whether it be in schools or wherever, make sure that they know that that is a resource that is available for their kids, and if they need help getting somewhere to trick or treat, to let us know, and we will see what we can do to make that happen. Thank you.
Mr. Hopper?
Mr. Walker, congratulations. You know, I couldn't imagine what you've seen from 1924 today, the war, World War II, and Korea, and Vietnam, and all these presidents that you lived through, and all just up and down through the economy, and what you've seen America become over that 100 years. It's just amazing. I just wish I could see what you saw. I wanna thank Ms. Harkrow, you know, for what y'all do. Me and the mayor worked for a long time at Gadsden PD, me and him, Fire Department, and we went to a lot of these homes like you were talking about, where you would go in and healthcare wouldn't be there before it was a thing, and it'd be families taking care of them. I started at Gadsden in 1988, and I've been in homes, whether in the projects or in the Mill Village, didn't matter where, it could have been in Clubview and the Country Club. I've been in all these kind of homes, where people hit hard times. People don't realize that. No matter where you come from, somewhere in your life, everybody, every one of us hits hard times in something, and I just wanna thank y'all for what y'all do. Halloween is upon us, and the thing is, is I know we do a lot of trunk and treats, but we still do a lot of neighborhoods. I think your neighborhood is real busy. Y'all's neighborhood, and, well, yes, right, you done moved out, didn't you? Just be mindful of the children and be smart if you're parents, give your kids flashlights. I think the, that was a great thing when we did the flashlight thing, to kinda train them, that the flashlights are important to, if nothing else, at the cars, be able to see that they're coming up there, because you never know if you got somebody that might have been drinking too much, or maybe took their medicine wrong, or didn't take their medicine, you know? And they coming through there, and, and we don't want our children to get hurt. The last two things I've got, real quickly, we've touched on the elections. The thing is, is I'm like Councilman Weiss, vote how you wanna vote. I vote red personally, so with that being said, expect long lines Tuesday. Be patient, be kind, okay? We're gonna see this throughout this country. This is gonna be probably every election, 2016 to 2020, and this one is gonna be probably record-setting numbers. And polls are open, what, seven to seven? And so with that being the case, be, basically, come to vote, pack lunch, and be ready to stay late. Just get it done, okay? Last but lastly, October 18th, we lost a valuable man in Etowah County. He came to the school system in 1984 and started the ROTC program in the city of Gadsden, and that is Colonel Carl Harrison. I met Colonel Harrison in 1984, 'cause I was in MSAM's first ROTC program. Now, he wasn't my officer, he chose Gadsden High for whatever reason, I don't know. I mean, the only thing they had was Halloween colors, it was fashionable. But he was a great man, as I got to know him over the decades. He lived to be 91 years old, and he was a fabulous man, and he's going, we're a little less valuable in this county without him. And Mayor, I'll turn it over to you.
Wednesday, October 30th is the last day that Etowah County Tag Office will be open in, in this city hall. It'll reopen Monday, January 6th of 2025. November 3rd of 2024 starts our daylight savings time, or ends daylight saving time. Tuesday, November 5th is the general election. Polls are open from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Wednesday, November 6th is the ribbon cutting for Ace Hospice located at 2901B Rainbow Drive at 12:00. Monday, November 11th, city hall will be closed in observance of Veterans Day, and garbage will be on schedule Monday through Friday. Thursday, November 14th, the ribbon cutting for Homestead, Home Instead, located at 607 West Grand Avenue at 11:30 a.m. December 14th, Wreaths Across America, it's a, a charity that, that Clark has talked about, will be laying wreaths, starting at 12:00, and they will meet in the big room at the community center, and then that will pass over to Old Harmony Cemetery. Right now, they're set to put about 126 wreaths out in that cemetery to veterans and some unknowns. And I would ask that, that you would go to wreathsacrossamerica.com and, and take the opportunity to buy a few wreaths, buy them in honor of, of the veterans and your family, and they would really appreciate it. They're doing really well in their, in their fundraising, but it'd be good for them to finish that up before they, they get to the time where they actually have to lay the wreaths. And you can do an honorarium on there, and you can also do a, a monthly giveaway and take care of that. November 6th at 11:00 a.m. at the venue is the Patriots Hall of Honor Luncheon, and then right after, following that would be the Veterans Day Parade in the city of Gadsden. And I, I just wanna say, first off, is, sir, thank you so much for coming. We, we, we appreciate you being here, and you really do. You, you're the fabric of this community. We know I have a lot of people that, that, that lived in Morgan's Crossroads, I promise you that, but, and, and knew exactly where it was, but we, we're so thankful that you're here with us tonight, and it's an absolute honor for this council to, to have you in our presence. Also, to our employees, we gave a pay raise tonight. We've tried to, as a council, look at what it takes to be able to maintain and retain our employees, and it's very, very important for us to see them have an opportunity to, to be able to better themselves in the way of their, of their living. And we're going to continue to do that and work hard to make sure that we're, we're taking care of our own. And with that, I would entertain a motion that we adjourn. Anyone? Thank y'all for being here.